Welcome to the July 8th Scarborough National Watergate meeting.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
Mr. Starr.
Here.
Mr. Crofton.
Here.
Mr. Arn.
Here.
Mr. Lozal.
Here.
Mr. Yip.
Here.
Stand for President.
... Supremed by the United States of America, a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Do I have motion for minutes from the June 11th?
Go through.
Second. Let's go.
For a second.
For a second. Okay, so just appeal, appeal number 2550, miscellaneous appeal requested by Scarborough Fishing Game in Homewood, Assistant Department of Armed and Civil Affairs. My home is State of Maine address and please note that...
Good evening. This is Michael Kane. I'm the president of Scarborough Fishing Game. I reside at 79 Vernon Road, Scarborough. Why we're here tonight is we want to add to our facilities three garage-type buildings, storage-type buildings, to hold the sporting plays that we shoot with our shotguns, and also to place a small addition onto the sporting plays building for kitchen use. Right now, we actually cook it outside and bring it in, so that's not working very well for us. So, I guess question mode would be the best for me.
Is that you here a year ago, sorry? 2012?
What's that now?
You've been for us once before?
Yes. What has happened, and then briefly what had happened, is our previous president passed away unexpectedly, and in that process, they had been to either the plan of order appeals or both for three out of the buildings. The only one that hadn't come, I think, before you before was the actual addition to the kitchen and sporting place. The storage buildings had come before you and were approved, and what I found out, and I believe, was that you only have six months to start them. And they thought that if you started one building, that that was a process kind of like a development, and you could keep on going with the ones that were approved. Once we found that out, we knew we had to come back and do it over.
I'm sorry, so you did start them, once you got approved, you did start working on the...
We started and finished one of the buildings then, not the three that we're asking for. The three were on there. One building was started and finished, but the others were not because we didn't have the funds at that point in time. So, what we were told is we had to start the process over again because we hadn't physically started or drew a permit for any of those buildings.
Can you clarify just a little bit for clarification, how they took into account all the things going on? I did not know that. I thought if they started on the process, they were okay, if separate from these at least, which are rare.
Well, and I'm not familiar with the details of that particular one, but if they, for example, got one building permit for all the buildings, you did a building permit for each?
Building per permit. Per building permits.
Yeah. If the approval was a special exception approval, and the approval was for all of those buildings, they would have had to have been completed, they would have had it been started within six months and completed within a year before the permit expires. I was actually confused about that, too, when I first got here, because usually, it's a little different in Scarborough than it is in downtown, but it does say that any approval, which includes a zoning board, it's not just a building permit, it's an approval. So, whether it's a permit or approval, it expires within six months if it isn't started.
And it's got to finish within a year.
Once you get started, you have a year to complete.
Oh, a year from, thank you. I did not know that. See, so this is a miscellaneous appeal. Any other questions?
No, as a miscellaneous appeal, it does require, no, it's not a miscellaneous appeal. It has to be reviewed under the special exception. That's what I was going to say, it's a special exception.
It was called out as a miscellaneous on the sheet.
What's that?
It was called out as a miscellaneous appeal on the sheet.
Yeah. It is, which was favorable. Beyond that, it's your basic standard non-conforming use, existing use in a RF zone, which they're now expanding by adding buildings and additions to buildings, and so it's up to the board to review it as a miscellaneous appeal, expansion of a non-conforming use.
Kane?
Yes.
Could you elaborate? Just given the rhetoric around ranges of the critical, is it good? Can you elaborate on what the fire services departments and how it works there?
Sure. I also have Mark Tannell with me tonight also, who's my chief range safety officer, so if I miss something, I'm sure he'll bring it to me. First of all, we've been a very popular club in the last, I'm going to say five years. Our membership has grown to over 1,000 in the club. With that said, on any given weekend, approximately 200, 250 could be present on the grounds. We offer shooting venues in a wide variety. We have competition pistol. We have sporting plays. Sporting plays is a shotgun sport, played a lot like golf. There's 14, 18 stations you walk around that big circle, and sitting in the ball of the golf club, you try to hit a little birdie with shotgun, so.
Can you elaborate on how...
And we have trap, which is one of the standards of the shotgun shooting world. We have long-range rifle. We have a 600 yard range at the facility, and that's dedicated for the long-range rifles. We have IDPA, which stands for international defense pistol. That's the one that sometimes you see on TV and everything, where they shoot behind barrels and around corners and things like that. We have an indoor range that we shoot in the wintertime in. Let's see, have I got any on?
He asked about the law enforcement, we have party four agencies that train him.
Right, yeah. We have agencies on the law enforcement that train, we have local, including Scarborough obviously. We have county, the county sheriffs. We have state, state police, and we have federal, and we also have military that are training at the facility.
How many acres is the property?
166.
I don't think you've ever had a complaint with it at all.
Not that we know of. Well, you're longer than I am, I don't know.
Been a long time since we've had any, obviously, complaints.
Yeah. We would probably say, first of all, we have now, I want to say over 50, over 60 range safety officers at that, correct? Yeah. And so, we man range safety officers every weekend during the summertime out at the facility. We're a very tight-knit group when it comes to safety. Also, we've installed electronic gates to the facility, so you have a small form in order for you to get into our facility electronically. You will present that at the gate, and obviously, the gate will up automatically if you've paid your dues, by the way. And while you're at that gate, while you're at that gate, you're on TV. In the last three years, we take this very serious. We don't want to have any incidents whatsoever. We now have camera supervision on our utility ranges, so if you go there and you're a member and you're shooting, we've got record of you shooting and pictures of you shooting. So, we do a lot of work with that. If you sign up to be a member in the club, if you just don't pay your dues and walk through the door, there's a very elaborate process that goes through for you to be checked out, including an interview process. You'll spend a full day with training with us, going over the policies and procedures that take place. That's probably why you don't hear a lot about us. We don't shoot till 8:00 in the morning, and then we're all done shooting at sunset.
And it's not open to the public, just...
The only time it is open to the public is on a competition event, and again, those most likely are going to be shooters from other organizations that are coming to Maine to shoot. When we have a sporting play event now, we will draw people from as far away as New York and some other Canada that will come. But most everybody that shows up there is either going to be NRA certified, or they're going to be a member of their own local club and coming to shoot at the club.
And if just somebody wanted to join, would they contact, help them connect up?
If you go on the website, Scarborough Fishing Game, there's an application there that you would fill out. That application is sent in. Once that application is sent in, it goes before the membership panel. The membership panel would then assign a sponsor to you. That sponsor would team up with you. You would go to the range with the sponsor. The sponsor would, first of all, give you a tour of the facilities to show you the different sporting events that you could participate in at the range. That sponsor would also take you to one of the utility ranges and observe you handling a firearm and shooting a firearm, so that we know you're safe with what you're doing with that firearm. When that process is taken care of, you go to the next step in the process, which is to go to the interview itself. We have a panel, and that panel changes depending upon who's available, anywhere from three to four. The longer-term members will interview you and ask you a set of questions that they ask everybody to try to get an idea of how you would handle firearms, what you would do, how you would participate in the club more than just coming over and shooting your firearm and leaving. You know, with 166 acres, we have a lot of work we do. We are a total volunteer club. Nobody gets paid to do this. They are all volunteers from the president on down. So, we have a, if you also, if you remember coming through the door for the first time, you're going to get a little todd, we call it the green todd. And a green todd means you're going to do 16 hours of service to the club in order for you to be into your second-year membership. If you do not volunteer for 16 hours, you won't be a member the second year.
I think it's interesting, because most people wouldn't even know it exists in Scarborough.
Yeah.
But I want to come back to the appeal now. So, I want us to vote for questions first, and then I'll vote for reactions. Is that pretty straightforward?
You mentioned that you completed one building. Where is that fourth building there?
The building that was completed in that, the right piece up. It's a sporting plays one, and it is located on the back side of their trail. Not showing on that one. Now, that is a, I believe, a 24 by 24 garage. That building is not marked out in the blue, and I, you won't be able to see it unless I come forward and show it to you. But basically, this is the new proposed garage, and right there, that square that you see sitting there on the trail, that little guy right there, that's the one that was in that previous package. Okay, so that'll be this one. It would be, oh, maybe it might flip straight. So, it would be, it's located right beside that one that I circled for you. That's, this one here is that, yes, you got it right on the screen now. Yep.
More questions from the board?
I got one question. One thing I noticed, you said that in your review of the effects of water and sewer, that you won't have any more water or sewer than what you would have today.
That is correct. When that building was built, it was built to have a kitchen placed in it. We couldn't afford it at the time, so when we designed the facility for the septic system, and there should be a letter in your package from the engineer that stated that that system was designed that way, so it would handle that.
Okay. The only change I would make, just to put it on record, is that I believe the way it was stated is there would be no increase in water flow, but if you're going to be, and one of the letters that came with it said, "The new project will allow preparation of hot dishes in the club's facility."
Correct.
And I think if that's the case, you'll probably be doing dishes on those serving...
We do dishes now in there.
Okay.
Okay. We do the dishwashing inside.
Okay.
It's the cooking that we don't have room for.
But you might have a few more dishes with cooking, so there might be a slight impact to...
We, we're going to see impact, I believe, all the time, yes.
But it will be minimal compared to what it was designed for, so.
As far as funding right now, you mentioned that, right now, you have a situation, you have the funding in place that you can...
That is correct. We expect that, they're just waiting, is what they're doing. What had happened is, we bumped into this inadvertently of coming down and getting the permit, and that's when we met with staff, and staff said, "I think we've got to redo this." So, we were in the permit mode a couple months back here to start these buildings. The funding is there, the money is there, we're all set to go.
I want to move back to the public authority from the public, let's just get on this issue. We've got to close the public part of this meeting. I'll come back to, why don't we go through the standards? What I'll do is I'll just read the standards, some questions, and you can respond to, these are pretty basic. Any questions? Thank you. Proportions will not create unsanitary or unhealthy conditions by using the sewage disposal conditions to the air or water or other aspects of its design or operation. If you can elaborate a little bit, if I saw the way, honestly, I was mentioning that.
The building septic system was designed to handle the flow that we intend to do. With that said, we made sure that there was a copy in the application by the civil engineer, so that you would know that this is an asylum that we did that to work with. We have, we've never had septic problems there, though. That's a sand soil, so it works easy as well.
Sand in Scarborough.
Yeah. Except for where my farm is, but that's a different subject.
Mr. Gray, glad.
Yeah.
Proportions will not create unsafe particular pedestrian traffic conditions when added to the existing foreseeable traffic in this vicinity.
Yeah. It won't, the storage garage and the kitchen won't have that effect. Obviously, the traffic that we get comes into the range road, and why they're there is for the shooting events. The kitchen area, obviously, will work for those shooting events. I also had a letter by the sporting place people, just in case, because a while back, I thought, wanted everybody to understand, we don't want to be in the rental business. We have no intention of renting weddings or anything like that. Ours is to support the shooting sports. And you'll see that, the outline that we put together here, by the way, is a 10-year plan that we work with Maine Department of Environmental Protection. They do a long-range one, and I would have presented a couple of other buildings along the way, when the money gets there, we intend to do. One is to do an expansion to our clubhouse. Our clubhouse right now can hold comfortably 50 people, maybe 60 people at the max, and then after that, it's not comfortable. It deters us from putting on any type of a function where we would bring a guest speaker in, of how to reload ammunition, or the latest and greatest designs, or pabellus, or something like that, that would come forward. And the reason we don't do those is because we couldn't house the people whatsoever. But that is three or four years out, because we raise our money before we build. We're not interested in taking loans. I have a couple of other buildings that are there in that long-range plan, but just want you to know that we don't do a pick-and-choose. We've got a definite plan, we know where we're headed. And actually, the site package that you see in front of you, that is the DEP plan. That is the DEP site package. So, you look on that, you'll see other buildings. Some of those buildings today do not exist. The addition to the clubhouse is not, and that's our next project. Hopefully, it's a big one. You'll also see one up in the upper corner, which is a shoot house dedicated to the law enforcement agencies, and that's something we hope that we can provide them, but obviously, that don't mean we'll have to get some grants through the law enforcement agencies to build that for. I think we have one more garage, storage area to go in rifle, and one more garage to go into IDPA. Those are out there ways. And now that we know that there's a six-month window, you will only see us if we can do it within those six-month windows. So, neither those storage garages or the kitchen addition, I believe, has any effect on traffic, and no effect that I could see on traffic out in the public way.
Now, Mr. Chair, may I add, if I could add to the first question?
Sure.
It was stated that they have an engineering design that supports the proposed use, as stated.
Thank you. While you're there, I'm going to ask another question tied to that, if you don't mind.
We have a lead reclaim program. We're one of the first ranges in the state of Maine to do that, as a matter of fact. Oh, it's been about a month ago, we hosted for the Maine State Inland Fisheries and Game Association, a workshop for all of the shooting ranges in the state of Maine, including law enforcement and the membership ranges throughout the state, with the process of going over how they can develop their lead mediation programs. We put together, and with the help of a lot of money, as they say, we have a trommel. A trommel is just a big bin, if anybody is, would be loose to, what could I compare it to? It's almost like the process you would do to sift loam and get the rocks and sticks out of the loam. We have a highly specialized one, so that we can take the dirt from the shooting burns that they shoot into, put the dirt in one end of the, one end of the machine, and off the other end of the machine comes separated dirt, separated lead. The lead is then processed and reclaimed through these salvage people, and we have a program that does that. Bob is actually in charge of that program. He manages the process of doing that for two reasons. One, obviously, is the lead content that will be into the ground. The second one, obviously, is for us, it becomes a hazard if there's too much lead out. We get what we call tiddlywinks, where the bullet will hit, and it'll bounce off. So, we have that there. We also have three monitoring wells on the site that we check each year to make sure that there's no lead content showing up in any of our groundwater, and we've been lead-free now for, before I was there, I would say. So, we have a fairly elaborate plan to manage that lead, and that's, by the way, the reason that we partner up with DEP, because we are a range, and they want us to be with them, and they monitor also that type of process.
Proportions will not create public safety problems, which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood, or require substantially greater degree of invisible fire, or police protection in existing uses in the neighborhood.
Right. Well, as I get out through it, projects will not affect the erosion sediment or water quality. Our entire campus is permitted with Maine DEP, and thus, our wastewater or stormwater systems are all managed, and we have filtration, filters, vegetation filters, to trap any type of runoff water that we have that goes sideways on our property. We have no sediment or erosion that would leave the property. As a matter of fact, we're pretty erosion-free. We've done a lot of work to make sure in the areas that we work in that we are. We channel our water through our own wetland, which is about in the middle of the property, and that passes through a bridge across that roadway. That's that piece of the puzzle. Let's see what else. We're not in local shoreline zoning.
Yeah, let me hold you right there for a second. I just want to keep you on the issue of the public safety problems.
Okay.
I'm assuming with gating, that's another finding effect, gating, is that if the county needs to call enforcement or...
Yes, we have. We've had over, over our, I'm going to say, two accidents involving shooters that had personal accidents that we did call 911 rescue for. They did outstanding job, by the way. They're there in three to four minutes. I mean, they were fast. Thank God, it's never a major, hasn't been a major, hope it will never be a major, but it's, we've had both law enforcement and civilian having accidents, they say.
This, you would have this, this would increase that?
No.
It's not what you're doing, there's no effect on that.
Not at all. Not at all.
Proportions will not create, I've already answered this, I think, the proportions will not result in sedimentation or, or have adverse effects on the water supply. Cover that in the last round.
Trying to go back with the, with the lead reclaim, could that...
Proportions will be compatible with existing use of the neighborhood with effects of physical signs, visual effect, density of use proximity to other structures, density of development. I think it's been around since, what year did it...
1950.
1950, yeah.
And also, with what we're doing here with the DEP, we've reached our maximum usage of that land for the type of stuff we do. So, what you see on that particular piece, once it's all built, we're built out, we can't do any more at that point in time without buying extra land.
And you're not in the shoreline zone, and you own, the club owns the land.
We own the property.
And you have the technical, financial ability to accomplish the task.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
And hours of operation indicated that it's no earlier than eight.
That's right. No shooting can occur before 8:00 in the morning, and for our general membership, no shooting is allowed once sunset is down.
Okay. Back to the board, the questions, comments, and appropriate findings of fact.
I think you've done a pretty nice job laying this out, of course, and answering the necessary questions, so thank you very much for being prepared.
Thank you. I would add one last thing, because I want to make sure that we, we did purchase a piece of land two years ago from the Kuzak family, Dietrich Speedway, and the reason we did that was to place additional buffer between us and our property line. That's a non-shooting area, we call it. And all of our shooting, by the way, shoots into the middle of our property, which we don't turn around and shoot out. That one, we have a very, very small mortgage for. I believe at this point in time, it's 20, oh, 15 by now, 15, 15. So, there's more to that. And all the acts, as they say.
I appreciate that.
Yep.
So, why don't we start off with, right back, these are the board findings of fact, each item, and I'll start down, one effect, and so, let's have a look at this, right. Proportions will not create unsanitary and unhealthy conditions by using sewage disposal conditions, air, and water, and other aspects of the design or operation. You want to start?
Yeah, I think the design of the property itself, from a noise standpoint, if that's an air emission, it's designed to keep the noise on the property. It's got burns on the outside, you have buffer vegetation, actually, exterior of the property. From a straight lead or ballistics standpoint, if they're shooting to the center, that's to keep it on property and not force it off property if someone has a stray shot. I think that is a finding effect as well. I think that and the design is engineered so that it supports the type of use that they got.
I agree with Mr. Lozal, and additionally, as he mentioned, the finding of fact, that the initial design for the septic system that was put in was to account for a full-size kitchen, like a barbous. So, really, they're just constructing, you're constructing a facility just to meet the requirements of the septic system that you have in place. requirements of the septic system that you have in place, that can handle it.
Mr. Carter.
Yeah, I would agree. As the applicants told us, they've done many things to prevent the erosion, as the engineer.
I agree with that, but I'd also like to add that I think the way that you guys have laid this out, and have everything flowing in the center of the property, water-wise, where you have wetlands and everything can filter out, I guess, per as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
I agree with everybody. I have nothing to add, but nice job on the presentation on, on Mr. Starks.
I, the lead recognition is a big deal, like as a fisherman, and the damage it does in that side of the road. And I just have heard nothing but great response over the years of what you guys have done. And I think that from an environmental point of view, I just think it's a facility that shoots, I have really zapped on me, which I didn't even know about the test files. Sometimes that's impressive. So let's go to the next one, is proposals will not grant safe vehicular pedestrian traffic conditions when added to existing foreseeable traffic. I'm not sure we need to go through that unless somebody feels the finding of fact, I think, pretty straightforward.
I think the finding of fact that as, that it's the proposed structures that you're putting on are not going to change the use of the property, it's not going to increase the volume of use on that property. So what we see today is what we have tomorrow.
And they have to recognize that, that they can't bring in larger groups like the Cabellons or something like that. They know what they're going to talk, they've already stated those to us, so they're limiting the traffic.
And they didn't state that these properties don't max still with the proposals they have.
I just have to say they're not going to be shotgun lanes or. Proposals will not create, the public safety problem should be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood, requiring substantially greater degree of municipal fire, police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood.
But I think they've proven that the use that they're using today is not going to change based on these structures, it's going to stay the same, and it shouldn't have an additional increase on the kind of use.
Additionally, with having the key block access to the facility and having closed-circuit television monitoring all the different, all the different shooting sites.
That's great. It's surprising how the TV settles everything down.
Yeah, I would agree. Yeah, it said if someone's shooting, they're being recorded, and it's very limited access, and anything's going towards the center of the site.
I'm not even going to add to that one. I think it's pretty solid, it's quite important.
Yeah, I'm very impressed. I didn't know all that went into it.
And proposals will not result in sedimentation, have adverse effects on water supplies.
I think finding of fact is that they have a collection onsite, they have a retention pond for sediment, to settle out, and they have vegetation to filter. It's well-designed, so.
In addition to physical size, as far as the structures being constructed, all the structures on the property are same story that you just spelled out here.
That's correct.
And the storage, structures won't be any taller than those, so there's no discernible impact to existing neighborhood.
And the applicant also mentioned that they're working with DEP, and DEP is doing onsite for them, so I think that's very close to the monitor this one.
And as was stated earlier, nothing flows above the property, it all moves into the center of the property.
Down the same glacier line. The proposals will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use proximity to other structures, intensity of development. It really doesn't change, so I'm not sure there's anything, there must have been a statement.
Well, I would just follow the fact that they recognized that they needed additional buffer, and they went and purchased that piece of land and get that additional buffer.
And it's not in the shoreline zone, you own the property, you have the financial ability, technical ability, and the proposals will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to generation of noise and house operation.
They've stated eight to dusk, and that fits within the use of the RF zone, so.
Is there ever been any problem with the dusk group? Because, I mean, obviously, it gets darker later in the summertime, you'd never run into anything with that.
I was, I don't want to mix the two up, but there are some times where the law enforcement agencies have to do a training, and they would be the only ones allowed to shoot after dusk. So Bob, do you want to? He's the guy that runs that, so I don't want to misspoke.
Well, see, Trap during the winter, they have the only lighted range. We, our rules, everything. It's about sunset, lighted range.
Trap.
Does the only lighted range, and they won't shoot, I know.
If you could just say that, nobody could.
Yes. Thank you, Bob. Trap does run a winter league, and the winter league runs from four o'clock to seven o'clock in the evening on a Thursday night. And they've done that for, I don't know how long.
Long as I've been.
Long as we've been there. And so that's the only time you would hear something shot after, after an hour minus L.D.
But that doesn't change my opinion of being done in the winter.
Just one question that isn't tied to these, but just for clarification, as far as any that accessible, we have, in terms of all our design for, do we have any?
Absolutely. We have shooters that are in wheelchairs that shoot pistol, trap, sporting clays.
IDPA, Bob?
Yes. IDPA, rifle.
IDPA stands for?
International Defense Pistol. That's the one that's going to be behind the barrel in the wheelchair. Did I leave anybody out?
Competition pistol. We designed all our ranges.
Every, every piece is designed for that. Every time we do something now, it is DEA. And I gotta forgive myself, the one thing I didn't mention is, we are now starting, and we've had the last couple, a very strong youth program is starting up. We have the Boy Scouts there. We sponsor a couple of the Olympic, junior Olympic shooters. As a matter of fact, I think one of the young gentlemen who's in the front page of the paper, Bob, do you know that name? No, no. Okay. But we've really started to go strong, because Bob's getting old. Bob's old, I think he's getting old. So we want to make sure that in the next generation, this is here for the people to have.
Did you also have one of the high school girls?
Yes.
Trying to remember her name.
I'm sorry, I'm so bad.
Erica.
Yeah. And she.
Sure.
Yes.
That guy you, can I bribe?
If you'd like to give.
Right, yeah. Sure.
I used, just came back from Fort Benning for international competition, and our team out of a possible of 600 shot 595.
Wow.
They were only beat by people shooting scores of 600, and they were like the fifth and sixth people competing against Italy, Chile, Brazil. And there were a lot of coaches there from colleges that were very interested in our use that we're shooting, and how we're developing our program. And we asked for advice from them, and they said, continue what you're doing, and they'll be ready for us. We in fact have two students leaving this year, one from Tennessee and one to Kentucky on a full scholarship, Baltimore on full shooting scholarships. And so our youth program is very well-developed, and it's becoming very well-recognized around the nation, so.
Congratulations.
We had five gold medals on the state championship last year, six.
So do I have, based on this, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the appeal to 2550.
Seven. Special motion. Okay.
Thank you.
Motion. Thank you. Nice appeal, number 2551, miscellaneous appeal, crossed by Mike Morans and 39 Assol Drive, this is not R50, R24C. And just a little bit of background on this, for those who don't know. The families owning that property were originally in a RF zone, and it was changed over when Haggis Parkway came into the P. And they were residential, and there's a dividend business in that area. And so technically, they became non-conformant because of a change in use that might summarize that property.
Yes, you are.
So.
Okay. Good.
Walter Wilson, Design Company. I'm representing the scans of this proposal located at 39 Eagle Side Drive. Like Mike was saying, the existing residential home was built in 1998, the property was RF, was now a result of P. And as a result, the home that they had built is now a non-conformant use. In order to enlarge the existing home and appeal to the zoning board for expansion for non-conformant use, conversion to another non-conformant use under Section 3F required. As indicated in Section 5B4, the audience requests for expansion of non-conformant use is also miscellaneous appeal. This requires review under Section 3F, and requires approval from the zoning board. Also, under Section BC5, states that miscellaneous appeal has to go in front of the planning board for their review, and that took place in June 22nd. I hardly believe you have a letter from that in your package. And so now we're here tonight to go over this re-application of a previously approved thing. It was all ready to go after the last approval, health conditions postponed everything. And after the, going through the health problems, they took a second look at what was approved previously. And we had to add a few little changes to it, a couple handicap ramps going into the existing building, as well as the one that was going into the addition. And that last appeal was approved under accessory use expansion. And we're coming back tonight with an expansion of non-conformant use, and a change of non-conformant use from a single-family to a two-family home. One of the reasons for that in particular was that a few restrictions that were put on as a miscellaneous, as a accessory use, don't conform to the wishes of what, how the place is going to be run in the future. Currently, there's going to be the mother-in-law occupying the addition of the second unit. With the medical problems in the house, they're looking long-term, that they may end up themselves living in the second unit, and the family members are residing in the other part of the house. And the big problem they had with accessory use is only two people could live in that second unit. And they're looking forward to maybe having good health, nursing care, and so forth, maybe one, two people. So they're replying on an expansion of non-conformant use, and they're changing the single family to a new place, use under the section of non-conformant use expansion. The proposed project will result in expansion of the non-conformant residential use and conversion of a one-family home into another non-conformant use, that being the duplex building. Basis for that is Section 3, Paragraph 5. The existing residential use of 2,368 square feet will be expanded to 2,886 square feet, and the additional unit will contain 1,156 square feet. The property is 3.99 acres in size. The finished product, project will totally have a lot coverage of 4,058, which includes both residential uses, porch and decks, carport, and access ramps. So the proposed building will occupy 2.7% of the property. And that's basically it, and I'm not sure.
No, well, actually, very well. RF zone allows for two families, so it's a permitted use in the RF zone. So if this had remained in the RF zone, it wouldn't be eligible for three families, it would be eligible for two families. And I bring that up strictly because the change in use was forced on that. The zone changed the Haggis Parkway. They were there, and of course, that's still a used, but realistically, if this were still an RF zone property, they would not need to come forward to us. So I just bring that up for that. I'm going to stop. Questions from the board? I'll open the public hearing. Do the public just speak in a second? No, I'll close the public hearing. Are they still running off the grid?
Right now, yeah, yes.
It's an interesting story to view, there's a pump down the scam and run off the grid. They're pretty amazing, actually, that they've been, they've been off the grid.
Such a beautiful, yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty impressive, everyone's I know. And it's beautiful. So I just, it's just one of the little sidebars that, are they staying off the grid?
I think they're going to have to look at getting back on the grid because of the requirements of some of the medical machines, or what may be there, that they're thinking long-term wise, it may be better to get back on the grid to guarantee they have capability.
Sorry, I had an apple. So why don't we jump right into?
Chairman, I could have one question. I just wanted to, this 20-foot step back, is the closest step back to that grid? That would be the corner of the depth.
Yes, that is the closest. Yeah. That's the corner of the depth, and the building is 25 foot.
Proposals will not create unsanitary and helpful conditions by reason of sewage disposal, which is the air or water, or other aspects of its design. I'll just go right through these.
I'm sorry, I can't read it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Why don't we go right through the standard? We'll start off with number one. A, the proposals will not create unsanitary and helpful conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions to the air or water, or other aspects of its design or operation.
See, the expansion of the resident will not create unsanitary and helpful conditions. The onsite sewage disposal system will be inspected and need to improve and satisfy the condition. I believe that was looked at, and I think there's going to be a little less than 10% extension on the wheat field, which will take place and will be submitted with the bill card.
And that's to be controlled by this code of enforcement. Proposals will not create unsafe vehicular pedestrian traffic conditions when added to the existing foreseeable traffic in its vicinity.
Now, Mingus, on Eagle Side Drive, it's a private road that connects to Two-Rod Road. This scam and residence also has a driveway that connects to Haggis Parkway. The proposed expansion on use will not create unsafe conditions when added to the existing or foreseeable traffic in its vicinity.
Proposals will not create public safety problems which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood, requiring substantially greater degree of municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood.
This residential expansion will not create any substantially different public safety problems in the neighborhood, it will not require a greater degree of municipal fire or police protection.
And proposals will not result in sedimentation or erosion, have other adverse effects on water supplies?
Well, construction practices during the work we implemented to control erosion and runoff, just the expansion until the finish rate is completed. And I don't see any problem with the runoff of all the ways that it will be controlled. We ran it next to one of the ponds, but that's going to be all self-defense controlled, so it won't be affecting any of our office in the pond.
Proposals will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use proximity to other structures, intensity of development.
Now, the residence is located approximately 300 feet away from Haggis Parkway in the area. The house is located on a border, consulting, and is fairly visible from Haggis Parkway. So it will not be impacted.
Yeah, it's not in the shoreline zone.
No, it's not.
And you own the property, and the financial piece.
Yes, since 1980, 1998, there's no problem.
And? And proposals compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to generation of noise and hours of operation, it's just on. E is interesting, proposals will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use proximity, other structures. It's enforced on, so although that may end up in perfect fit, certainly the scammers didn't create that situation, so it's, I think it meets that definition. But if I may add one more.
I think that that last one also is with respect to generation and noise analysis of operation, so there's not going to be any impact on that whatsoever.
So why don't we come to the board with any, in fact, any new items, and we'll start down. We'll start off as just, and it can be, anybody wants to jump in. We're not going to go through each one of these, I don't think there's any, but if you have any kind of fact you'd like to add regarding this.
I think Walter's can't disclose sufficiently. Paul's going to make perfectly good sense to make.
I certainly don't see how it can possibly create any additional, much additional vehicle or traffic on number B there. First off, they're expanding just a small amount, maybe one more car possibly per day according to that area. So I don't think we're even counting. And I don't see any issues with their name.
So we're not going down?
We won't be unless you want to take one. You take any or all, just fine. I just figured.
No, I think, I think it's because you stated that this is something that was kind of forced on, and they're kind of in the middle of something that they didn't plan on being in the middle of, but unfortunately, regulations are, as much as they are, it's made to come before us to go through.
And it didn't make sense at the time, I remember they're going through this, it didn't make sense at this time to carve it out. And that was one of the things that I think is imperative, they didn't do that for it. In other words, keep it in our zone. I want to go please.
Yeah, it's a small question.
I'm satisfied with the explanation that Mr. Wilson provided. I don't have any concerns.
I mean, I think the finding effect is that the sewage system is being properly sized and adhered to cover the additional occupancy that's going to be going on in the structure. On B, I think there's no significant change to the volume of traffic that goes down those roads now. They're following, under D, they're following the proper settlement control for during construction, and then they're going to be finished grading, so it'll have grass or some type of vegetation on top of this, there's not going to have any additional erosion potential under B. That was all I had.
What type of fence did you say it was that was preventing?
Silvertight. Silvertight, yeah, submersion control.
Because that's because it's next to the pond?
Yes, that's where you disturb earth and ground, you don't want runoff to, you know, rainstorm or whatever, that runoff properties, those are the control.
This just ties back to, maybe it was our question. Were those man-made ponds, those are created, so they don't require a hundred feet set outs or?
They're all man-made ponds.
So they don't require a set out? That's correct. Trying to be sure about that. What is, what is the distance from the ponds, just to take a special note?
The distance from?
From the pond building? Do you know what it is?
Well, the closest ones about, it shows up in the building is this one right here from the building opposite the pond, it's relative to forty-five feet to the back of the pond.
But just to find the fact here, we do that, that's irrelevant, because in fact, they're ponds, and they're not required to meet the same standards as a, 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 a man-made pond, for lack of a better term. So it doesn't have that same standard.
I think that's the area.
Oh, really? So the area of pond doesn't qualify as a?
Sure. You've stated that this is a medical need now as to why it needed to be changed from the original.
This, yes, it's changed their mind as to how they want this done. And also, we have to put some ramps in, which weren't in there before. And the only change on the second unit, we had to make a small entryway change, I think to about, to about sixty or seventy square feet larger than what it was before, when we came in from it. So there's very little change from the structure itself, it primarily has to do with the access ramp and the porch way to the existing house, because it elevated up off the ground about four and a half feet, we're going to get a ramp way up there with a set of stairs, and keep it powered across, so it's easier to get in and out of. And so we put the porch over, a roof over that porch, which was not there before. The building sizes, structural sizes, like I said, almost exactly like the way we came through last time.
And I think the finding effect that you said was basically that they're accommodating for having a possibility of having a living professional have to come in there, that's why they don't, you know, additional, that's a possibility.
Yeah, other things, but certainly have a motion. Got more questions?
Need to approve by twenty-five fifty-one, that's proposed.
Second. Special motion. And the last appeal. Appeal number twenty-five fifty-two is practical difficulty variance requested by Lou Schur, an author of Black, it's a sad name. It's a Roser, nine Pineapple Circle, Sustenac, U-17, parcel seven two. And before we start, I, if I remember correctly, this had a little bit of issue with understanding the overhangs, is that correct? Is it something they don't think?
No, don't think so.
I've been taking your medication.
That doesn't matter. Why don't we let you jump in? If there's any wish I could?
You guys are stumped me.
My name is Kevin Mopman, and I'm an architect here to represent Lila and Arthur. And so Lila grew up visiting her grandmother's house in Crowe's neck, and that place is no longer in the family now, so she wants to create a space where, you know, her grandkids who are kind of down the road in the future will have a place to come and, and to create memories of her grandmother's house. And so she owns the ranch at nine Pineapple Circle. As it exists, it's about seven hundred and fourteen square feet on one floor. So what we'd like permission to do is to reconstruct the existing roof, which is a low slope, at a steeper pitch, so that we can accommodate two bedrooms and a bathroom up there. The other thing we'd like to do is, the house exists with a basement bedroom, we'd like to install co-compliant egress well, basically a larger window and a, a polyethylene piece of equipment that bolts to the house, it's underground, allow someone to safely exit that basement second. And we'd like to extend a portion of the eve at the front of the house to better shut the front door. So currently, the house, the setbacks cross three sides of the house. So in the design of the new roof, I've held the eve location and raised the peak by eight feet, so to kind of minimize the impact of what we're growing on the house.
So, trying to get my hand over, I don't know, I'm getting my hands wrong, because I can't. You're going, you're going up?
Going up.
Out we go on?
We are proposing a small mudroom addition, but that will be within the setbacks and told with conforming to current zoning. So we're going up on the existing footprint, and we're also removing a first floor wood deck that currently exists in the setback, we're removing that from the setback and not reconstructing that. Basically, taking that portion of the coverage to build a small mudroom in a conformant location.
And again?
Don't look ahead, anything in addition to my staff comments. I think as Kevin had explained, if they wish to have a code compliant bed in the basement, it does require an emergency escape restroom opening, a five point seven square feet net clear opening. The window well that he's talking about will provide that, it is code compliant, it does give them that emergency escape. I'm actually not a hundred percent certain that that is a setback issue, because it's below grade, essentially, but it's not something that I, I wanted to complicate the request by bringing up.
I wanted to make sure we asked for it now, instead of finding out what should happen shortly.
I think it's, I think it's a good discussion topic for the board, if they, if they feel like it is or it isn't, maybe it's a good chance to weigh in. I do appreciate the fact that you're, you're dealing with it, rather than waiting for it to become an issue, because I really don't know how that should be viewed. It's a subsurface structure and therefore.
It doesn't have like a plastic dome.
It does have a little plastic dome over it, but, you know, I guess, I think if you really wanted to adhere to the, you know, the letter of the law, probably, it does qualify as a structure, it is permitted, so therefore it probably does require some, some relief in order to exist in the setback. How, how, how it impacts any, any neighboring properties or any other thing, I don't know. It qualifies that, but certainly it's something that would have to be dealt with at some point. I think the other thing that Kevin mentioned is that the dormer issue on the, on the front of the house, we do have a standard or allowance in the ordinance that you can add dormers as long as they're a setback with one foot from the, from the eve line and, or excuse me, from the building line and a foot from each end and don't, don't exceed the, the distance of the ridge. Unfortunately, it doesn't really qualify because they're already vertically expanding the structure, so it's sort of a moot point, if you will, but.
So vertically expanded structure, but look to that existing guy.
You were following that, shape of the dormers? Yeah, yeah. And so, so it's sort of, it's an interesting point, they're sort of following that, but yet they're still asking for a re-vertically raise that roof up on the non-conformant portion. Everything else, I think, is pretty much as he's presented it, I don't see anything else that I need to bring to your attention, I guess.
It seems like it's sort of all documented files, thank you. That makes a lot of these.
I would point the board's attention to the, the one that's on the screen, you have that page in front of you as well, but that's a good way to sort of look at the existing versus the proposed in the various views.
So maybe some architects can do. It's like a three-D puzzle, and I've got to figure out the size and shape of all the pieces.
Okay, why don't we ask the board any questions, start? I'll open the public hearing. I'll be here. And here is the letter, she's come calling.
I believe that she didn't receive a letter, I thought it was going to be, didn't receive a phone call and a letter, who thought that she might have some problems with it just because of the additional height, as well as, although I don't really see how this plays in, her other comment was snow removal, anywhere to put the snow, but I don't know that increasing the height of the structure, really not expanding, it's going to have any effect on whether it snow, but she, she didn't, she didn't think she would be here tonight, she was going to send a letter, I know this.
And you, you remember the name of the girl?
I actually do not. She's the letter to the, if you're out looking at the house from the street, she's, this is a letter to the lot. And I don't remember, I called, that's.
And the one-story garage is not there, or is it?
That's, that's not there, that's on the neighboring property.
And the driveway is where?
The driveway is right along that property line, in fact, the pavement kind of extends from one property across to the other.
Oh, you mean where the garage is?
Where the garage.
It's like a shared driveway almost?
Right now, and planting right along the property line and separate those driveways.
It feels like they're pretty much combined.
Yeah, yeah, they are, it's one continuous surface from.
But that's not the, that's the heavy issue.
Yeah, we got it. So the, the bottom of that, those questions, that snow removal really is on the other side. So I think it's, I'm glad they got a call, I think it's great, but from practical point of view, I don't see how that would be related to the.
Because the parking, the driveway is not moving anywhere.
That's right, and substantially so, it may shift a little bit left or right, but it's going to be on that corner of the lot and.
It's not going to the other side of the house.
It's not going to the other side of the house, that's right. And it will ideally no longer cross them.
The relevant term was? Like, just like, should?
Yeah, basically just a stone.
Yeah.
It's approximately.
Yeah. And this, they're well within the restrictions, so. So this is a practical difficulty variance, and so it's a little bit harder standings than most. The need for variance is due to the unique surface of the property, not the general conditions in the neighborhood. Can you continue here and explain it, as opposed to saying?
Yes. Yeah, so the house, right now, exists pretty much how it was built in nineteen fifty-seven, you know, maybe there was some paint or fixtures change, but, you know, so this house was in place before the current zoning and the current setbacks. The way the house was built, the roof is a truss structural system, and it's a low pitch, so with the low pitch, there's not enough room for us, not enough room for us to create space under the existing roof, and because it's a truss, it can't be easily modified, you know, so we have to, to build a whole roof to, to create that space there.
So next is granting the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the characters of the neighborhood, and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use or fair market value of the property.
So I've included some photos in the package of neighboring houses, which are mostly this cave, there's some that are full two stories or sort of story and a half high-posted cave. The house immediately to the right, that the driveway shared with, is, is two stories. So this change will actually bring the house more in scale with the neighborhood, there are no other ranch houses in that neighborhood. And additionally, we're removing a deck on what would be the right side of the house, wood-framed deck that sits in the setback on the side of the property where the neighbor's garage is, you know, essentially right on the property line, so we.
Is that the east elevation?
Yeah.
So you want like a deck slash?
Yep, so that, that deck actually moved, so that sort of brings our structure further away from what exists.
And the practical difficulty is not a result of an actual cave, but the app can prior on?
The, yeah, the house, essentially, as it was constructed in nineteen fifty-seven, it was, hasn't been changed much since then.
One of the feasible alternatives there with the app is subtle variance?
Well, with the, it's a small house on a small lot, so our coverage, our lot coverage would preclude us from expanding outward. And if you look at the, the sightline, you can see how close to the rear property line the neighboring structure is, it's essentially deep from the property line, so expansion outward would also be an undesirable impact on the neighborhood, at least expansion outward at the scale of creating bedrooms. So, you know, putting them up was the most feasible, feasible way to do it. So you know, putting them up was the most feasible, feasible way to do it. And given that the structural system that exists there yet had to be reconstructed again.
And granting variance will result in bringing the app's property more nearly to performance with surrounding properties.
Yeah, so it's going to be more in scale with what exists in the neighborhood after the change that it is right now.
And granted, the variance will not have an unreasonable effect on the natural environment.
And part of the renovation, the house is going to get a more efficient mechanical system and insulation upgrades, so it actually will be better environmentally than what is this, the...
It's not the flood zone.
It's not a flood zone.
So back to the questions.
Now, right now, is it, is there any part of the home, because we've had some other folks that have come before us with issues of the home, like roofs that may be leaking or built on top of the roof that mold condition or there's utilities that need to be upgraded or there's finer access or safety issues, hallways that we've had in basements that are pretty much unwalkable. Do any of these exist in this current structure?
Well, there's the only access to what the roof space now is through a hatch.
I'm asking more safety concerns or environmental things.
The entire house is going to get renovated, so right now there's a stair to the basement with winders that don't meet current code. So the house is going to have new stairways in it that will meet the current code. All bedrooms are going to have egress windows that meet the current code. So part of this renovation will be bringing the entire structure up to current code. Is that addressed to your question?
It does. So there's really no major concerns as to why they need to renovate. They're just addressing some concerns along the way with the renovation.
That's right. They're addressing some current concerns with the renovation area, creating better bedrooms, expanding that.
And you're also doing a downstairs bedroom.
That's right. And we're improving the safety of the downstairs bedroom that exists.
Did you happen to look at alternatives for the egress? Did you look at going back to the back of the house, putting it in the middle of the wall there? And if you still, what was the reasoning for not doing that?
Well, along the back of the house, there was existing mechanical penetrations in the foundation. There was the waistline goes out into the back. But we also were looking to use the back where, to create that mudroom addition in a compliant way where we could meet all the current setbacks that sort of precluded the well would be there. For the most part, the bedroom kind of exists in the corner of the house now that it had before.
Yeah, I guess I'm just kind of looking at where the mudroom is. It looks to me that to the left of that, you still have plenty of room to put an egress. And I may be wrong. That's why I'm asking the question.
So it may be possible to put it there. Right now, that space is not within the bedroom. There's a mechanical closet.
But you don't actually have to have the egress in the bedroom along with it's down in the basement. Is that correct?
No, it has to be within the bedroom itself.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for answering my question.
And as far as going out back there, is this subject pursued?
This is sewn, I believe.
So you're not including any material or anything?
Right.
Normally, we look at it to begin the footprint. When we use these, although normally nothing is in the envelope, so this actually, that little section happens to be in the envelope. It seems diminished.
Some portion of the rear dormer, maybe some depth of the wall is actually in the middle of the envelope.
As far as step backs are concerned, are you extending anything to include the step with my question about either use past existing footprint?
We would like to extend the eve in the front to cover the steps. So there are front steps that exist in the setback that we'll be rebuilding. We would like to extend the eve to cover those steps better. And so we're asking for that front step back to, let's say, I think reduce to 16 feet. Now, we're looking to extend that eve only covering what is existing footprint on the house, so we don't want to expand the eve coverage beyond those front steps. It's just to create more shelter down the front door. And those are the step over and pointed out on the street.
Sure.
That's this.
So is that in your third request, which it says to extension of the fronting two feet closer?
Yes.
So you want to go with two feet in response to the chairman's question?
That's right. Yes, we'd like to extend two feet further into the steps.
Just over the steps.
Over steps that exist in that setback.
And that's new. Well, it's in the existing footprint.
Let me see if I can clear this up. Not usually my forte, but let me see if I can clear this up. The requested eve extension doesn't protrude any further than the existing steps.
Correct. That's correct.
Towards the street.
That's right.
Nor wider.
Nor wider.
That's right.
However, with the renovations, the steps widening a little bit?
I know the steps are on the same side.
Okay. So all he's asking for is, right now, the eve line goes straight across. He's asking for a two-foot bump out or a foot bump.
Two feet, yep.
Just over the steps to shed water off the steps, not any further towards the road. And I guess it's the board's prerogative to determine whether or not they feel that exceeds what's reasonable.
So we're not, yeah.
But nothing is coming any closer to the road than the closest point of the structure now, which is the steps.
That's right. That eve extension will still be further from the road than the bottom step that exists right now.
And this is just a, I shouldn't know the answer, but I'm gonna pause it. Steps, are they traditionally considered part of the structure or are they separate from the...
It depends on the town. Some towns expressly don't consider them as part of the structure. And in fact, in our recent workshops in Higgins Beach on that rework of the ordinance there, zoning there, there is actually a proposal that is in keeping with many other communities where stoops and porches can exist in the setback area because they're not considered part of the building proper. I've never been exposed to that situation, but it seems like it could be reasonable. What we consider as part of the structure, the steps are considered part of the structure. If steps are needed, yeah, if they're needed to exist inside the setback, we have often approved landscaping materials like stacked granite blocks. Dry stacked granite blocks can exist in the setback. Something that's built and attached to the house cannot. So there's ways. Not always, not always the best option, but... So the long story short is that, yes, we consider steps as part of the structure and they need to be set back. Except for in the case of an accessibility, ADA accessibility issue, for example, ramp that needs to be added and the only way that you can get the proper sloping distance is to put it in the setback and we can make allowance to that.
Other questions? Can you move on?
I've got with Mr. Chair. Normally, I don't struggle with this question, but I'm struggling with it a little bit tonight. Question one, the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property, not the general conditions of the neighborhood. What that means is that this particular property has something on it that makes it more difficult to work around than any of the ones around it. And I'm not seeing that. So if you could help me with that, if there was a chunk of ledge that came up in the middle of this and nobody else has it, and you've got to change the way you build because of that, I understand. But I'm looking at, they're all pretty uniform. They're all about the same size. What's unique about this property that you have an issue as compared to the other properties around it?
Well, what's unique about this property is, I think this lot is quite a bit smaller than the neighbor's, you know, at 5,000 square feet.
Do you have numbers of the properties around it?
I don't have numbers.
Okay. You have on the right-hand side, 193 front inch, and on the left-hand side, 69, 62, which is about the same size.
Then the one to the left looks like 62?
Yes.
And the ones in the rear kind of bridges the three. But that at 5,000 square feet and 20% coverage, that gives us 1,000 square feet to work with and the existing footprint is 714.
Would the property to the left be any different than that?
The property to the left is, I don't know offhand.
I know you did study that as part of...
The property to the left was constructed, I think, well, I would guess by the location of it, it was constructed after the current zoning is passed, which this one was constructed before the current zoning. But this property to the left may have been built after the current zoning and may be a more, it's obviously a more modern structure.
The property to the left is more modern?
The property to the left is more modern. Although this lot would be difficult to build in the conforming location, we'd be within 18 feet of the house to the rear. You can see on the site plan, this cross dashed line, you know, within the foot of our property line, that is the existing house to the rear.
In the garage to the right, same condition?
The garage to the right exists, you know...
Right, on the property, essentially.
Yeah. So the conforming location sort of provides some difficulties in its relationship to other existing structures.
What is interesting to me tied to that is that property to the back and property to the right both can fringe on this property, whereas this property doesn't do anything more.
Right, right. So I guess you could say that's a unique circumstance in this particular property.
I also believe that from looking at the one on the left there, it appears to be back in the envelope. This one was obviously built before there was an envelope, but it's well outside of the envelope. So to get it working for me, you pretty much have to tear the house down and start over and moving everything back.
Okay, I think that helps me. Thank you.
Other questions? Can you start going to explain the fact and the concerns the board has that we have to discuss? You look perplexed, so I'm just looking.
No, there's just one question I'm struggling with and I'm trying to ask it. No, that's the finding the fact and go through the question.
Unique to the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property, not the general conditions of the neighborhood. And I'll just open it up to the board as they choose to discuss their points on that.
Well, I'll just reiterate what I said. I think finding the fact, based on what we just discussed, is the property to the rear has a structure that's almost on this property line. The property to the right has a garage structure that's almost on the property line. So unique to this situation is that the envelope squeezes, both from a visual and a physical standpoint, it squeezes the envelope on this particular property and wouldn't make you comfortable to expand out any further than they have.
And I'll follow up with it. I'm making an assumption based on a small snapshot, but I guess I'm probably right. It looks like this home was built prior to the setback requirements, whereas the homes to the left looks like it might have been built after setback requirements.
That's my assumption.
That does look like it's sitting in the envelope as opposed to this one here. So I think that also kind of finds the difference. Any other questions or comments, a fact on number one? Number two, granting the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use or fair market value of the property. And again, open up these to the board.
In this case, I would have to say it's probably going to increase the values of the other properties. It makes it much more conforming and it's going to look more like the other properties around it, being more the same size and the same shape. I see nothing detrimental in there, Mary Bird.
I do like the fact that you have to kind of state that they're pondering the driveway to kind of separate that a little bit from the people that are right there now. By doing that, you may create a snow removal issue yourself by doing that because it's like it's not now.
On the opposite side of the red hall.
Yeah, but I mean, it's good that you're looking at that because I mean, it's basically on driveway.
And the deck is coming off, which is... Any other thoughts?
My comments, the mimic, we'll just start with Crockett. In addition, if anything, this home being old and outdated as it is, has the potential of devaluing the current property, matching the current property surrounding it. It could only help financially.
I agree with what's also been said, and I think by adding the egress in the basement, making the house more safer from an escape standpoint, it adds value as well.
And that's not designed as a second, it's not, I noticed the layout, it doesn't look like it's designed at all as a residential apartment or anything.
It's not a residential unit, not access to it, it's only through the name living space.
And practical difficulty is going to result in protruding by the app's prior owner.
I think it's clear that this happened as a result of the change that we made about that.
The bed is in the wall portion.
No, as the chair pointed out, the property right next to it, you see inside the envelope.
So... The bedrooms are relatively small on the second floor. It wouldn't have been reasonable to have one bedroom up there. But does it change anything?
Well, it's, you know, there's, there would be no other feasible alternative to my client, who's the applicant, because this is sort of a project that's within the scope of her needs. She can't afford a bigger four-bedroom house elsewhere, you know, but she wants to be here. And you know, this is sort of a project that fits her needs to follow the trend financially.
I would lean more towards what Mr. Crockett's saying. If they had gone outside of the envelope of the existing home, and since they went straight up in the same envelope, I had less of an issue with it. If they were trying to push the envelope by taking up more planned space, then I think I'd have a problem with it. But again, they reduced the envelope by taking the deck, shifting it to the back and putting it in a billable area. The only thing that really is outside is the change in the front entrance, where they want to take the eve and stick it out another two feet. And less issue with that if they tried to go the whole front line of the property above the building, I think I'd have issue. But it's just to cover the stairs. I think that's being reasonable. Taking the footprint, going straight up, I think that's very reasonable. And now they're getting egress on the left to get people out of the basement from a safety reason standpoint, it makes sense to me.
I think I can all that as a fact.
Another one within the...
Right.
This is sewn?
Sewn.
It is sewn, so we don't care about it. So if this had come forward to us as one bedroom upstairs, but they later on decided to put a wall up and make two bedrooms, wouldn't that have... They'd come forward to you, probably, they'll be for that part, but... But if they did it right, it comes to...
They did it right.
So if we proved this with one bedroom on third, second floor, and two, which means five years from now, another, not that you're not going to stay, but another door.
Door to the fourth and opposite. We're breaking this. I don't think, Mr. Chair, I don't think I'm even looking at it from the one less bedroom. It's the state that the applicants desire to have this family, to have the four bedrooms. Everything could be done without having four bedrooms, without coming before us. That's where I'm struggling because there is a feasible alternative. You could still have three bedrooms. You could still get that egress in. You can still house family that comes and visits. That's where I'm really struggling with it. I'm not even saying one bedroom or two bedroom. I'm just saying everything could be fixed without having to do that.
If you were looking at, tied to that question from financial point of view, going up all these lists, expensive to go out. And you're not to use the fact that ballpark values, if you're looking at doing the same project as a single structure, and the cost would be...
Well, I'll just speak relatively about costs. So in a single-story structure, your costs are multiplied. If you imagine you've got a foundation and a roof that are covering your living space. So in a two-story structure... So in a two-story structure, the foundation and the roof cover twice as much living space as a one-story structure. So the one-story structure sprawls, you're purchasing twice as much foundation and twice as much roof to cover the same living area that you could accommodate in a one-story, in a two-story structure.
So a thirty, forty percent.
Yes.
Circle.
Well, and, and in this specific case, it would have the benefit of the resource efficiency of saving the foundation that's in the first floor or structure that exists.
And they're feasibly pretty go back, but again, it comes back to the same issues of who wants that. I mean, they could expand out in the envelope.
But they can't.
And more than three percent.
How? They're at seven percent now, so what's three percent gonna get you? It's not gonna get you anything. You're eating up more area. I think we were, Mr. Crockett, I think, quite, currently have three bedrooms. You could rehab the house, you could remodel it, you could reappoint it, you could do all that stuff. And not require any variance at all. The only thing that would require variance, I think, if established, is to need rest well, you know, the basement bed. And, you know, and obviously, this project in large, the living area opens up the kitchen, it does some other things that may, may make the, the house more look poor, and allow maybe more people to be there, but. That's really the question, but then again, we're not talking about hardship, we're talking about practical difficulty. If the desire is to add a bedroom, how can you add the bedroom feasibly? Is there a feasible way to add it? It's not, it's not really so much a matter of do you need the bedroom? It's a matter of how can you do it feasibly?
As opposed to a variance?
As opposed to, as opposed to undue hardship? This is practical difficulty.
Right, which is why they say this.
Yeah, but, but it's a valid point.
If we were to track the size of houses from when this was built until now. In the sixties and seventies, you had a family of three in a twelve-hundred-square-foot house. Now you have a family of one and a half in a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot house. This house is still substantially smaller than what the current real estate market would expect for.
That's my thought too, is that seven hundred and fourteen square feet, let's face that. It's the size of the most living room we've built. This is just, it doesn't seem feasible to me, that one and a half kids in a seven hundred, was it fourteen, seven hundred and fourteen?
The footprint of the existing house is seven hundred and fourteen square.
Yeah, which is, to me, is, is so small, so, I mean, if you've got a parent and two kids in there, you, it would be, it would be very defining. And I, and I also think that the boards, we've, we've, we've approved these time and time again, one definitely one. These things, he's met, he's worked within foundations, he's actually removed the deck, increased the back. I think he's done everything that we've consistently looked available beyond in the past. Even above and beyond, I think he's, he's worked out to keep it all, he has expanded the footprint, he's decreased the footprint. Again, seven hundred and fifteen square feet, that is, that's, by any way, that's a studio.
I would like to say it's bigger than this, than this house.
So, Mr. Onstaf made a comment, maybe I'm interpreting this wrong, then are we not even as a board supposed to consider that fourth bedroom, because we're just considering if they are adding a fourth bedroom, can they do it feasibly other than the way that they're doing it? So I'm, I'm looking at it like, why, that you may not need a fourth bedroom, and you're saying that really, we shouldn't even be considering that.
Oh, I'm not saying you shouldn't consider it, but I think you have to go back to the criteria, or new criteria, refer to that. Is there, is there any criteria that you can say, the applicant doesn't have any right to a fourth bedroom? I mean, is that in there?
If it was a set system, I'd have an issue, that's why I asked the question.
I'm not, I'm not for or against, I'm just simply saying, if, if the request is, is, I mean, it would be one thing if they wanted to expand the footprint and do all kinds of stuff. Then all of that other, all of those other impediments come back into play. I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, this is a practical difficulty variance. What you're trying to determine is there any other feasible alternative rather than to grant the variance? To them, for them to do what, if, if the request is reasonable, then is there any other alternative other than variance that would allow them to do it?
So if they wanted a fourth bedroom per se.
Let's, let's.
And they went back, just say, just say per se, they put the fourth bedroom with undermiss. They probably have to come before us.
But that wouldn't meet the legal, the code minimum size for a bedroom.
The need for the variance, what, I mean, let's start right from the beginning. The need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property, not to the general conditions of the neighborhood. What are the unique circumstances of the property? You already had a discussion about the size of the property versus the properties next to it. It's, it's your job to determine, is, is the property unique or is it not? Okay, that has nothing to do with whether or not they, they should have a fourth bedroom or not. It's, is the property unique or not? The granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Would a fourth bedroom produce an undesirable change in the neighborhood? It's your job to determine whether that is true or not, okay? The practical difficulty is not the result of action taken by the applicant or a prior owner. That's the one that I think everybody trips up on. I, I've never heard a good argument for that one yet. So if I, if I was sitting on the board, which I am not, I would really be pounding on that one. But I, I am only here to.
Hold on a minute.
Yeah. So, I mean, how, how is this not an action, a result of action taken by the owner? I can't answer that, so that's your job, means why they pay you the big bucks. Then the fourth one, no other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except for variance. If, if the, if the request is for that fourth bedroom or for that second-story expansion, is there any other alternative available to the applicant? That's what you guys need to.
Feasible.
Feasible, feasible alternative. And, you know, the granting of the variance bringing an applicant's property more nearly to the performance, I think Mr. Holken talked about other properties in that neighborhood being, and I think the pictures even show several two, sort of two-story or one-and-a-half. Yeah, very few ranches in that neighborhood. So I think there's a reasonable argument there, you know, that can be made. You know, I don't think there's any adverse effect on the natural environment, that's my opinion. I'm not forcing that one on you at all. And it's not even a part of the support, surely. So really, to me, it all gets down to the number three and number four. You know, those are, and, and Mr. Wozel pointed out, number one in this case, because you do have to determine if this is something that's unique, this property. It's not really a matter of whether or not they deserve to have a fourth bedroom. It's a matter of how can the request be done without the variance?
If I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, the, the charretto had done, this is a classic example of if the town is moving in a direction that they're talking about, this was something that wouldn't have come to the board picture.
Do you have the, the summary statement, proposal on that? I, I, I think it's an R2 zone, I just don't have anything in front of me that, was this in an R2 zone? Kevin, do you?
I'm checking.
Okay, thank you. So, so there's another, you know, the minimum lot size in an R2 zone is twenty thousand square feet. You're dealing with five thousand?
Five thousand.
I, I, and again, I'm zoning administrator, but I would question why in the world that neighborhood zoned R2? Because most of the lots are nowhere near twenty thousand square feet.
Eighty-eight.
Yeah, yeah, at least on the floor. But, so, so, you know, there's kind of an argument, or a point of debate. It's an R2 zone, which mostly can be twenty thousand square feet to deal with, in which case you can expand backwards under the envelope until kingdom come.
Do I need a four-area ratio to work with?
Yeah, six, seven bedrooms, easy. But, but because of that five thousand square foot limit, the, the only, the only way you can do any kind of expansion to your home, which most people would enjoy, the ability to do if you live in other districts perhaps, is to go out. And, you know, I think Mr. Stark pointed out, they've done, or maybe it was Mike, they, they've done everything that we usually look at, are they staying within the envelope of the existing house? Are they popping out of the, I mean, so, so those are the points that you, I'm not saying. But I'm only just trying to, I'm trying to come back and reinforce.
But I think it's important, I think it ties it back, thank you, and this is.
Not for or against, just pointing out the points that you need to ponder.
And every board member still can have their own views, that's what this is all about, is that, that, I, I understand Mr. Crockett's concern is consistent with that, he's always been consistent with that. Inconsistency to me is more important than merit. So I have no problem with that, his issue there, I am okay with it, I, I tend to tell the same.
If I could, I think the, the way to come back to that three-bedroom question, which I think is a valid question, is you tie that back to, is this a self-created hardship? Is this action taken by the applicant? You know, that's where that ties in.
We don't want to go like.
Like, oh, it's.
Well, no, I mean, it is, it is an action that the applicant is taking to bring them forward.
I think that's what I'm.
But I was going back and forth to go to three, but.
To me, to me, the definition of, and I'll, I'll try to school the expert. Who's the expert there? I'll give you it all day long. The practical difficulty is not a reason for action taken by the applicant or a prior owner. To me, it would be a negative, in other words, I interpret that as meaning that they did something stupid. And they deserve what they got, that's an interesting. So that's what I've looked at it the last eighteen years, is they do something stupid, nah, they didn't.
Well, if they had four kids, why they don't have one?
So I, I mean it sincerely, I mean, that's how I look at it, is, is did they create something that, why did you do that?
Well, Mr. Onstaf's point, for houses like this, where they are, you don't see very many that do have a bedroom wasted.
But that, back then was not an issue, the requirement for the egress was nineteen seventy-six.
My father had bedrooms and a chicken coop. Except the kids.
So I mean, I think realistically, that's again, if you look at that issue specifically. The, the current coding, the current codes do require that. Back, I don't know when that, I think, I want to say it was the seventies, that they put that in, is that polka?
Yeah, it would have happened sometime, probably seventies, seventies.
Seventies polka, I remember perfectly.
So this house was.
That wasn't happening. Well, obviously, it was done well enough that required, it could be handled without watering, it should be.
You couldn't put it in my case.
So, coming back to that issue, I, do you want to list define the fact it is contrary, which is fine? Or do you want to leave it as what we talked about, or how would you like to proceed with your position on that specific item? Not feasible, sorry.
I, I think, I've expressed my opinion, and there's been ample discussion, I don't think we need the labor anymore.
Granny grants, we don't, we have to properly when dealing with performance with surrounding properties. I think, as long as I did a really good job, just like, anybody have, anything they'd like to add?
Yeah, I think the applicant talked about the type of structures that surround this particular one in recent months.
And, and who else wish to add anything more? I, I don't usually have a problem with that. The granny grants will not have an unreasonable trust of environment. I kind of chuckle about the fact that it has gonna be less, it'll be tighter, so I guess.
It'll consume less fuel.
Fuel, so I guess, I, I, that is a selling issue, especially with the fact that if, the, the people are allowed anybody, so it becomes almost a big problem, and that property is in the zone. So that's kind of where I'm standing. Anybody wish to add anything else for this by the fact of concern? I personally think that this is consistent with what we've done. I think the question that is always a fair question is feasible alternative? There are alternatives, I don't believe that is. And I guess my, my definition of feasible cost, and cost efficiency, and you could see there on floor, but. It could be a no-go. I would, when you're looking at from a practical point of view, the cost, twenty thousand dollars on the list, and it's gonna cost two fifty if you go up, because you're only adding eight fuel bar now. It doesn't make sense to do that. It would be hard to justify a cost without expanding the space, in my opinion. So I would try that as a point.
Yeah, remind folks that practical difficulty in this case is defined as a case where strict application of the dimensional standards of the ordinance to the property for which a variance is applicable preclude a use of the property which is permitted in the zone. And therefore, you know, an extra bedroom is a permitted use of residence, if you want to look at it that way. And, and, and also would result in significant economic injury to the end.
And I, personally, I believe it's not allowing that second floor, it's definitely an economic injury. To a point where if it personally, obviously, you can get on a personal judgment, but, but personally, I mean, to me, this is a math equation. Like, it doesn't make financial sense, we're better off to settle the bond. And if it, you know, I want to stay here, financially, I can't see the, the sound to stay at some fifteen square feet and not go up to resurface, in the first.
The only counterargument to that that could be made is that you should just purchase a property.
Uh, they go into, in two thousand thirteen, they bought it, so.
Didn't see bottom as a three-bedroom ranch.
The argument could be on that time back to year number three, which is the practicalities of doing action taken by the applicant or a prior owner. It's difficult, I'll keep it sealed longer.
Let's not go that way.
I, I don't, I don't consider that stupid. I think they bought a property and they decided they want to improve it, and so, you know, I, I, maybe that's.